Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Liquor Control Commission meeting for Monday, July 19, 2021. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Brady, roll call, please.
Commissioner Papantos?
Present.
Commissioner Vito?
Here.
Commissioner Lang?
Here.
Commissioner Kruger?
Present.
Commissioner Vogel?
Here.
Commissioner Raffado?
Here.
Chairperson Horker?
Here. You have before you the minutes of the special meeting of May 17, 2021. I need a motion for their approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, trustee Commissioner Papantos, second Commissioner Kruger, roll call, please.
Commissioner Papantos?
Yes.
Commissioner Vito?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vito, I mean, excuse me, Vogel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Raffado?
Yes.
Chairperson Horker?
Yes. Clerk Brady, any citizens' concerns or comments?
No, not at this time.
New items. 6A, Clerk Brady.
Consideration of a request for Class L liquor license. Wheeling Commercial Development LLC doing business as Wheeling Town Center for an event to be held at the Wheeling Town Center Plaza, August 13, August 14, and September 11, 2021.
Mr. Svandilis, what do we got?
Thank you. Before you this evening is a consideration for a Class L liquor license. The commission has granted two previous licenses. The code allows for a third for a total of nine days in a single calendar year. This would fulfill that obligation of the last three dates for the year. Just so the commission is aware, that staff will be bringing to the board an idea to create a new liquor class that would allow this particular user to hold a year-long license so they can do special events at their desire next year without having coming back for new licenses in increments of three. So staff will have that prepared for this year, for next year, in anticipation of many events to come. But for now, it is the final of the three opportunities allowable by code for August 13, August 14, and September 11. The petitioner is here. Hi, Brad. And should the commission consider the request, I would ask that a motion be made to approve condition upon the payment of all associated fees.
Commissioner Papantos, you had a question or a comment?
First of all, thank you for doing this. I hear it's a great success. So who's going to be on the plaza for these dates?
So this Saturday, we've gone to Paradise, which is a Jimmy Buffett and Friends tribute. August 13, midnight, Riders, Allman Brothers tribute. August 14, Ryan-Herrick Trio. September 11, Where's Maggie? And then September 12, which is not on the docket yet, will be an Eric Church tribute.
Great.
And just so everyone's aware, the Bears are playing that night on September 12, but not until 7:20. So the Eric Church tribute will play from 4:30 to 7:00, getting out just in time for everyone to watch the 7:20 Sunday night kickoff with the Bears at the Rams.
Just to be clear, I think Mr. Friedman gave staff an assignment because in order for that last item to occur, the board has to amend the code to make that happen. So thanks, Brad. It seems staff will be bringing you a new liquor license consideration at the next board meeting.
Not that I don't like coming here and seeing you guys on a regular basis and requesting permissions for special liquor licenses.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem.
Commissioner Lang, you had a question?
Just related, unrelated, has CMX thought about doing any outdoor seating for their food?
Yes, actually, they requested that from me. I sent them a map of the plaza. I said, just identify where you want the outdoor seating. There was one communication with Ross, and I know that there hasn't been any pushback and that that's something that I think everybody wants. You know, the issue that everyone's having, and this is not news to Wheeling or Illinois, it's a nationwide issue that staff, you know, everyone's just sitting at home collecting unemployment, not to be so political, but it's, everyone's having a hard time getting staff. And so CMX doesn't have enough staff to take care of those people that want to be in those outdoor tables. So that's something that they're dealing with.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, we do need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, trustee Vogel, second, trustee Commissioner Raffado, roll call, please.
Commissioner Papantos?
Yes.
Commissioner Vito?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Raffado?
Yes.
Chairperson Horker?
Yes.
All right, so do I need anything, or we're all good? Okay, I'll stop by and make the payment tomorrow.
There you go.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, guys, have a good one.
Thanks, Brad.
Read B, C, D, and E together?
Sure. Consideration of a request for a supplemental Class 4D liquor license, Tuscany Wheeling LLC, 550 South Milwaukee Avenue. 6C, consideration of a request for a supplement Class 4D liquor license for Hung Apeo doing business as Las Islas, sorry, Morales, 784 West Dundee Road. And 6D, consideration of request for supplement Class 4D liquor license, Old Munich, Inc. at 582 North Milwaukee Avenue. And 6E is consideration of request for a supplement Class 4D liquor license for Bottleneck Wheeling LLC doing business as City Works Eatery and Poorhouse, 365 West Dundee Road in the Wheeling Town Center.
Thank you, Clerk Brady. Mr. Svandilis, these are all similar.
Yes, thank you. We are taking these four items together because the explanation behind all four of them is the same. We have four restaurants this evening asking to reclassify their existing liquor license to a Class D-4 license. A D-4 license is supplemental, authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages in sealed containers for consumption off the premises. You may recall that during the COVID restrictions, the village temporarily extended the permissions granted in the D-4 license to all existing license holders. Now that those restrictions have been lifted, restaurants and taverns that wish to sell packaged liquor outside of their allowable license must individually apply for and be granted a D-4 license. So this evening, the four petitioners are Tuscany Wheeling LLC, Hung Apeo doing business as Las Islas Marias.
Thank you.
Old Munich Inn, and Bottleneck Wheeling doing business as City Works Eatery and Poorhouse. Two conditions applicable to each of the restaurants. I would ask that any motion to approve be made. One, payment of all associated fees, and second, the passage of an ordinance by the Board of Trustees authorizing the creation of a new D-4 liquor license for each establishment. There are representatives here this evening. If you have questions specific to any business, I'm happy to answer any questions on the idea of approving the D-4 licenses in general.
Commissioner Papantos, you had a question?
Thank you, it's a general question. Does this allow delivery of alcohol, then?
No, it does not, as written. That was allowed pursuant to the governor's executive order during the state of emergency, during the pandemic. This does not currently allow for delivery.
Okay, so it's purchased onsite?
That's my understanding.
That's correct. That said, each of the, well, I don't know if each, there are different classes, and not all four restaurants hold the same class currently. So the delivery of alcohol is based on the class that they currently have. This is, as Attorney Frola said, just for the sale of sealed beverages onsite.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Papantos. We have no other questions or comments. You want to take these individually, I'm guessing?
Yes.
I would need a motion for the consideration of a request for supplemental Class D-4 liquor license for Tuscany with the conditions as outlined.
Thank you.
So moved with conditions.
Second.
Commissioner Kruger first makes the motion. Commissioner Papantos seconds, roll call, please.
Commissioner Papantos?
Yes.
Commissioner Vito?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Raffado?
Yes.
And chairperson Horker?
Yes, I need a motion for a supplemental Class D-4 liquor license for Hung Apeo?
Hung Apeo?
Las Islas Marias. With the conditions as outlined.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Raffado, second, Commissioner Kruger, roll call, please.
Commissioner Papantos?
Yes.
Commissioner Vito?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Raffado?
Yes.
Chairperson Horker?
Yes, need a motion for the consideration of a request for supplemental Class D-4 liquor license for Old Munich Inn with the conditions as outlined.
So moved.
Commissioner Papantos, second.
Second.
Commissioner Raffado, roll call, please.
Commissioner Papantos?
Yes.
Commissioner Vito?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Raffado?
Yes.
Chairperson Horker?
Yes. You do it enough times, it just flows.
Item E, Clerk Brady.
We didn't do a lot of them.
Sorry?
City Works.
It's a D-4 for City Works.
Sorry, yes. Need a motion for a request for a supplemental Class D-4 liquor license for bottlenecks of Wheeling LLC, which would be City Works Eatery and Poorhouse. Motion, was that trustee, Commissioner Kruger?
So moved.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Commissioner, I'll go to Papantos, roll call, please.
Commissioner Papantos?
Yes.
Commissioner Vito?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Raffado?
Yes.
Chairperson Horker?
Yes.
6F, consideration of a request for a Class NV liquor license for Mo's Cafe, Inc., doing business as Mo's Cafe at 31-33 North Elmhurst Road.
Mr. Svandilis.
Thank you. As the title indicates, this is a Class NV request, which is a video gaming cafe at the subject address. If the commission approves this request, staff will prepare an ordinance for the new Class NV license for the village board, and I would ask that any consideration be made with consideration for the, one, passage of an ordinance by the Board of Trustees authorizing the creation of a new Class NV liquor license; two, submission of a certificate of liquor liability insurance; three, satisfactory background check results; and four, payment of all applicable fees. I believe the petitioner is here and can answer any questions if the commission has them.
Hello, my name is Odalis Andrea Uriostegui.
Hello. Questions from the commission? Motion for approval?
So moved with conditions.
Commissioner Papantos, second.
Second.
Commissioner Raffado, Clerk Brady, roll call, please.
Chairperson Papantos?
Yes. Commissioner.
Got promoted.
You've been promoted. Sorry, thank you. Commissioner Vito?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
No.
Commissioner Raffado?
Yes.
And chairperson Horker?
Yes. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
6G, consideration of request for a Class I liquor license for Village Wheeling for an event to be held on August 21, 2021.
Mr. Svandilis. Thank you. This is a request from the Village of Wheeling to host its annual Rock and Run the Runway event, which this year will be held on August 21. This is the much-beloved event that we have all come to know and appreciate. I'm happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Fireworks?
There will be fireworks, food truck, food trucks, entertainment, everything you want in a family event.
Awesome. Questions from the rest of the commission? I'm sorry. Commissioner Papantos?
Is there a flyer available that we can direct people to?
There will be very shortly. Our website is up, which is rockandruntherunway.com, and it is linked through the village's website as well. But there will be specific advertisements going out later this month. We don't want to get too ahead of it, but they will be coming shortly.
Thank you.
No other questions or comments? Motion for the, motion to be approved conditionally on submittal of a Basset certificates for all applicable individuals.
Thank you, yes.
The motion, please.
So moved.
Commissioner Vogel? Second. Commissioner Papantos?
Kruger.
Kruger.
Thank you. Commissioner Papantos?
Yes.
Commissioner Vito?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Raffado?
Yes.
Chairperson Horker?
Yes.
Need a motion to adjourn from the Liquor Commission meeting?
So moved. Second.
Motion, Commissioner Kruger, second, Commissioner Papantos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Liquor Commission adjourned. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Village Board of Wheeling for July 19, 2021. We already did the pledge. Clerk Brady, roll call, please.
Trustee Lang?
Here.
Trustee Vogel?
Here.
Trustee Kruger?
Present.
Trustee Raffado?
Here.
Trustee Vito?
Here.
Trustee Papantos?
Present.
President Horker?
Here.
You have before you the minutes of the regular meeting of June 21, 2021. I need a motion for their approval.
So moved.
Trustee Papantos, second.
Second.
Trustee Raffado, roll call, please.
Trustee Lang?
Yes.
Trustee Vogel?
Yes.
Trustee Kruger?
Yes.
Trustee Raffado?
Yes.
Trustee Vito?
Yes.
Trustee Papantos?
Yes.
President Horker?
Yes, any changes to the agenda? There are no changes this evening.
Clerk Brady, roll call.
Proclamation.
Yes.
Proclamation, Village of Wheeling, in recognition of the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, MABUS, whereas the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System began in the northwest suburbs of Chicago in 1968 on Alpro Fire Lieutenant Don.
Hey, Luca? Everybody's looking for someone to blame.
Oh, someone, can you hear me? Chief Don Cohen suggests that large suburban fires could be responded to in the similar way as Chicago's HOX alarm, and whereas MABUS alarms are designed to provide the fast response of emergency resources of communities during ongoing emergencies, and whereas, in partnership with the Illinois Emergency Management Agency, MABUS signed the memorandum of understanding in 2001 establishing a statewide mutual aid response system for fire. Emergency Medical Service and Specialized Incident Operational Team, and whereas MABUS responds to over 800 local extra alarm incidents annually throughout the 69 MABUS divisions in Illinois, Wisconsin, Indiana, Michigan, and parts of Iowa. And whereas MABUS has been active as many occasions by the Illinois Emergency Management Association for Emergency Declarations since 2001, including response to the Tamara train derailment, Rono tornado, Utica and Harrisburg tornadoes, and the Gulf Coast Hurricanes Katrina, Gustav, and Ike. And whereas the J. Redden MABUS Readiness Center is located in the former Village of Wheeling Public Works facility at 233 West Hints Road, and whereas the Village of Wheeling is fortunate to have the MABUS organization within its jurisdiction and greatly appreciates the work that MABUS does to protect the lives and property. Patrick Horker, president of the Village of Wheeling, does hereby proclaim recognition and appreciation of the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, Illinois, and its employees and associate members for their hard work and dedication in public service. Thank you.
Chief McReel, you have a few words to say about this wonderful organization.
I do, but I'd first like to introduce chief executive officer Glenn Erickson, he's on the left, he's here with his wife. Section's chief of operations, Kevin Lang. Section's chief of administration, Bernie Lyons. Thank you very much for coming. So in addition to the info on proclamation, it's worth noting that over the last year and a half, the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System provided logistic support of emergency personnel and equipment to several real-world incidents, including the spring flooding, the Wood River Refinery Fire, the Rockton Fire Incident, the Morris, Illinois Lithium Battery Fire, and the Naperville tornado, all while providing operational support for the COVID-19 pandemic, in which MABUS provided managed countless resources, including one year and 174 days and counting of sustained operations. The village would like to thank all the MABUS staff for providing a place for our displaced engine and ambulance crew. They gave them a place to live and operate for over 10 months. The MABUS folks not only provided the facility, they made sure we had everything we needed to staff a makeshift fire station. MABUS made the perfect temporary fire station as the facility is located on the west side of the railroad tracks.
In addition to everything else, you're a great antenna.
That's right. It's a corduroy. So Station 23 is also on the west side of the tracks. This is significant in that crews would not be delayed by train traffic responding to that part of the village. Having the ability to utilize MABUS significantly reduced the cost of not only finding other accommodations for crew and equipment, construction costs were reduced, and the project was completed ahead of schedule. The village appreciates not only your mission to protect the lives of the citizens and visitors of Illinois, we appreciate your partnership and generosity.
Thank you. Give it to him later? Well, no. Would you? We really are fortunate to have you in and among our community. If you'd like to say a few words, I mean, you seem to be having issues with everything. You probably had just a problem.
10 months ago, Chief McReel, first of all, when I explained to God and everything that all of us at MABUS are perfect, have been down through the previous life. Certainly, and that there's some issues that I do have, step off, sound edge. Realistically, as the Village Fire Station can learn the things that the fire chief of the city wants, you should make a thinking, put coverage, station, new order, step off quite often, station, I think, just being late, I apologize for that, I mean, it's been notable there. I think it's a lot, I really appreciate the relationship that Village of Wheeling, we're really happy to be resident of the Village here, right now, and then, well, we get a small part of the neighborhood.
Thank you. We actually, we really are fortunate to have you guys with us. I had the pleasure of taking a tour of your facility years ago. For those of you who are not familiar with what they do, they have what are basically retrofitted cargo containers that you can roll off at the site of an emergency, and they are things like complete hospitals, complete living quarters for a dozen or two dozen people, equipped with like water and laundry facilities, right? Right, but you have like, you have these modular units that you just send to disaster areas, and we have them based right here, and I think it's wonderful to have you guys. Thank you. Citizens' concerns and comments, Clerk Brady?
Yes, we have two today. Members of the public may address the board with comments regarding issues related to village business. No citizen shall speak for more than five minutes without consent of the board. Members of the general public who wish to address the board must sign in the request to speak form prior to the commencement of the public meeting. And our first speaker is Tom Stenonis and Alex N. about dangerous animal.
Just as a reminder, this is a time for citizens to make their comments and express their concerns, and for the board to listen. Neither the board nor staff will be answering questions.
Good evening, council, president.
Hello.
I have some neighborhood kids here with me. On last Thursday, July 15, 8:45, an animal attacked Alex's mom and a dog, and it was a pit bull. That was 8:45, and he contacted me. But anyway, in the morning, I rode my bike to look at the fence where it came through on Schoenbeck. Looked like a beast went through the fence. I couldn't believe the broken wood, and there's blood all over the sidewalk. It was really disturbing to me. She went to the emergency room, and anyway, you see, I'm a little rattled right now. I went over to his mom's house, the victim's house, and was talking to the victim, and I called, actually, I wanted to go to the topic, called President Horker. And I left a message on Friday morning, late AM, and there was no forwarding number, in case you were out. I then proceeded to call the police. And Megan, I think her name was, I had a discussion with her, she put me on hold to do some other business, and then she came back to the phone, and I discussed more with her, and she said, well, I'm not, I'm not the police. And I said, I said, well, what's your name? And she said, Megan. I said, well, listen, I'm, you know, I know what she said. She said, the victim has to make the report. And I said, what's your name? She said, Megan. I said, listen, I'm calling to make a report. And then she changed her tone, she said, I'll send a police officer out. A community service officer came out, I would like to demonstrate it, actually. Seven seconds. He got out of his car, said, what's up? I said, I want to talk about a dog. It's already been reported. Got back in his car. I would expect him to introduce himself, give me his card. Community service officer, is that seven seconds appropriate? I'll let you decide that. So I proceeded to call Cook County Animal Control Board in Bridgeview, find out the status of the dog and the confinement, because I have a sample of kids here. There's a lot more kids than this in the neighborhood. So we're essentially on lockdown Friday, because we got no word, his mom, the victim, got no word from the police saying the status or the confinement of the dog or incarceration. We were in lockdown Saturday, lockdown Sunday. We were in lockdown Saturday, lockdown Sunday. I know it's not like a circus animal, tiger, cage flipped over, but still, the animal could have killed his mom. If I go past the five minutes, I'm going to request additional time, just, but anyway, keep track. Um, where was I? Oh, the animal, animal control. I talked to Samantha there, and they said they would call me back. So we're still on lockdown. Okay, so she called me back this afternoon, and she said that they have no report from the Wheeling Police Department, and that's the proper procedure. She said they usually fax it or mail to find out, request for dangerous dog investigation to put on restrictions. But none of that has occurred, according to Samantha. So here we are. Even though the attack happened Thursday night, we have a continued threat to the community and even to you all. This dog could be loose. We have no idea where this dog is. It's not a safe area, and we don't know if the dog's kept under control. The son talked to his mom, and they said that the police did call back, I think, was it today or yesterday about the rabies? They said, they looked in the records and said it had its shots and its tags. But the dog could have been bit last month or last week. The dog needs to be in quarantine. You don't, don't just look at the existing condition of the past. Alex, would you like to say a word about what happened to you previously with the dog, a previous incident as you were walking?
My name is Alex, and about like two months ago, I was walking my Golden Retriever and on Shownback Road. And where I was walking, about to the right is where the fence is, and my dog was there, and he was just sniffing next, near the fence. And the pit bull tried, like, put his head under the fence and tried to bite my dog, scared him, barking and everything, like pushing the fence with his paws. And about, right about, since I'm walking, like, you know, trying to pull my dog away.
Sir, I know this seems very cold, but I really can't allow too much extra time.
Okay, I request additional time. We only have two speakers tonight. Can I ask for additional three minutes, please?
If you had signed all of them, they could each have five minutes.
Oh, no, just one person, he's all, he's the.
If you had signed all of them, they could each have five minutes.
I did ask you.
No, it's Alex N.
I will grant you three minutes.
Thank you.
And.
Thank you.
About at the end of the fence of their property.
Okay.
The pit bull broke a board with his paws and almost bit my dog again. And, and it was really scary. And, yeah.
Thanks, Alex. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. John, please, go ahead.
If you would, you can coordinate with Deputy Chief Al Stefan, who is here. That way, the matter can be handled directly with the deputy chief, who is here, and you can have the discussion and get all the information that you need, and we can move forward. So he's behind you there, and if you guys just want to have that conversation, we'll make sure that everything's taken care of.
Thanks, John, because it's neighborhood, you don't know it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Clerk Brady, next.
All items listed on the Cassette Agenda.
Wasn't there two people?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Sherwin, please, Prairie Park. Sorry, Sherwin.
I'd just like to follow up with a couple of items regarding Prairie Park. In 1989, we had the movie Field of Dreams. The punchline was, if you build it, they will come. Now, coming to the present day, if Prairie Park puts up a model building, what happens if they cannot sell 18 cramped townhomes for $500,000 or $600,000 each? Or if the economy takes a tailspin? I'd like to have you consider that. Another thing is that there's plans out there to completely restructure the Prairie Park units with creating a master plan and subsidiary plans. Now, to the best of my awareness, none of this has been projected to the present owners at Prairie Park. And above all, there's a consideration for the reserve fund. It's hard to understand how anyone would buy a townhome with a pretty damn big reserve fund obligation hanging over their head. So I'd like these points for your consideration. I know Prairie Park's not on the agenda this evening, but please, keep that in mind when they are on. Thank you.
Has everyone tried turning off your? Yeah, I'd like a motion for a five-minute recess for technical difficulties. Everybody, Jimmy, we're not going to go anywhere. Motion for Bado, second trustee Kruger, five-minute recess while we try to figure, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Recess. We're not going to go anywhere, we're just going to try and.
Turn the sound off. We're all loud enough. What? Turn the sound off. We can yell.
Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30.
Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30.
Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30.
Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30.
Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30.
Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30.
Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30.
Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30. Yeah, we'll be under the temperature, sure. Plus it's 5:30.
Those voices might be mine here. Okay, good. Same thing. Um, they're trying to figure out what they're doing. I don't feel like I know. Um, that's the situation right now.
So, the microphones are live, so hopefully the audience at home can hear us, but we're just gonna have to project it here, so there's no application here, which shouldn't be a big deal. It's a bit of a gamble, because if the hissing is still occurring at...you can still hear it? Well, then it's an inconvenience, but I think we still need to move on the village business. So, um, since Jim's not here, I guess I will say, uh, would a roll call for, uh, reopen the meeting? They should approve that.
We are being still...are we still being broad...are we still being broadcast?
Yeah.
So it was. Okay, okay, uh, roll call to reopen the meeting.
Trustee Lang.
Uh, here.
Trustee Vogel.
Here.
Trustee Kruger. And Trustee Raffato.
Yep.
Trustee Tito.
Yes.
Trustee Capatos.
Present.
Uh, present and present. Here. Uh, we were at the consent agenda, I believe.
All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the village board and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the board member or citizen shall request, in which event this item will be included in the general order of business and be considered after all the other designated. So, want me to read it now?
Yes, open. We're gonna run them here.
11A, waiving competitive bidding and accepting a previous bid contract for the purchase of the new Pierce manufacturing fire engine from a clean emergency group at a cost not to exceed $655,000. 11B, resolution approving the change in staffing levels in human resource department. 11C, resolution affirming and argu...agreement between the Village of Wheeling and AFSCME Council 31 for and on behalf of local 1344 for a period May 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2025. 11D, resolution approving recycling of certain executive session audio tapes pursuant to the Illinois Open Act 5 ILCS 1202.06C. Resolution approving the release of certain executive session minutes of the president and board of trustees of the Village of Wheeling, Illinois. 11F, ordinance declaring a surplus of authorizing the disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Wheeling by recycling, trade-in, donation, or public auction. 11G, resolution approving a professional service contract with Chad State and Associates, LLC for the fiscal year 2021 pavement assessment program in the amount not to exceed $29,500. 11H, resolution approving a previous bid contract with Precision Pavement Marketing, Inc. for the fiscal year 2021 pavement marketing program in the amount not to exceed $39,280.66. Ordinance amending Chapter 4.32 of the Village of Wheeling Municipal Code, alcoholic liquor dealers, specifically Section 4.32.085, to increase the authorized number of Class 4D liquor license. 11J, resolution approving change order number one and final to reduce the construction contract with Joel Kennedy Construction Corp. from $1,852,900 to $1,036,309.64 for 2020 lead service line replacement project.
Any questions or comments on the issues? If they're...Trustee Vogel makes a motion to approve. Second, trustee Lang. Clerk Brady, roll call, please.
Trustee Lang.
Yes.
Trustee Vogel.
Yes.
Trustee Kruger.
Yes.
Trustee Raffato.
Yes.
Trustee Vito.
Yes.
Trustee Capatos.
Yes.
Present and present.
Yes. Brings us to 13A. We have a public hearing. Uh, request...I'm sorry, clerk Brady.
Um, request for Cook County Class 6B real estate tax assessment for EKJ Wheeling, LLC at 43 West Hints Road.
All right, this is a public hearing for the public to make comments regarding the request for a Class 6B real estate tax assessment for 43 West Hints Road. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Herald. Each member of the public shall have five minutes to make their comments. During this time, staff and the board will not answer questions. Comments should not be repetitive or argumentative. Are there any comments from the public? Going once, going twice. There being no comments from the public relative to this issue, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion, trustee Capatos, second from who? Trustee Kruger, roll call, please.
Uh, trustee Lang.
Yes.
Trustee Vogel.
Yes.
Trustee Kruger.
Yes.
Trustee Raffato.
Yes.
Trustee Vito.
Yes.
Trustee Capatos.
Yes.
Present and present.
Yes, this then brings us to the meat of the matter. Mr. Svan Dillis, what is this?
Uh, thank you. Before you this evening is a request for a Class 6B classification at 43 West Hints Road for a building that is 309,749 square feet. It is, in fact, the largest available industrial building in Wheeling. EKJ Wheeling, LLC is under contract to purchase the entire building and has identified an end user, which is Ginny Beauty Supply. Uh, they are going to consolidate three operations and house warehousing and distribution activities out of the subject building. Ginny provides 60,000-plus beauty supply products, uh, to over 1,500 independent beauty supply retailers. As part of their relocation to Wheeling, they are planning to open a retail store that will be open to the public in the front part of the 43 West Hints Road property. Uh, the space will be between 3,000 and 4,000 square feet. Additionally, there will be up to 55 employees initially working out of the site with, uh, an eventual 30 additional employees for future growth. Uh, the purchaser will be putting in between 2.5 and 3.5 million in improvements, and as always, staff performs an analysis to ensure, um, that this is financially appropriate for the village. To that end, uh, should the improvements be made where the scenario...I'm sorry, should improvements be made and the incentive is applied, the annual tax would be $838,135. Under scenario where the building remains vacant and unused, the annual tax would be Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, that the board may have. The petitioner is here and can answer any specific questions about the business.
Trustee Capatos, you had a question?
Thank you for the petitioner. This is more of a time gap.
Well, if you...if you both could just come up and still speak into the microphone, should...
Come on up, introduce yourselves loudly, please, and, uh, we're gonna hope this works.
Hi, I'm Xavier Kavitz. I'm here on behalf of EKJ Wheeling, LLC. It's really Ginny Beauty Supply is the applicant. Here with me today, I have Kevin Lee, who's a director. He's been there for over 16 years. And Fred Kroner, the broker for the owner. He's been with us for over 15 years of work. So he's really familiar with everyone. So, we're excited to meet you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lee, um, you're doing a substantial amount of work in the building as all...how long will it take you to do the work before you're ready to start, um, manufacturing and distributing out of that site?
Uh, company?
How long?
So, I think they're stuck...I think the plan is, is that they're gonna, uh, in August, purchase and start all the work, and then really start before the end of the year, hopefully November, but December, uh, basically will be fine.
And how long before it's complete, so that...
Uh, they'll be completely in the facility. They have to be, because they're consolidating two other facilities that need to be closed down, uh, no longer...no later than probably November, is what they're believing, that they'll be fully operational.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the trustees? If there are no other questions, we need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion, trustee Raffato.
Second.
Second, trustee Capatos. We need a roll call. Clerk Brady.
Trustee Lang.
Yes.
Trustee Vogel.
Yes.
Trustee Kruger.
Yes.
Trustee Raffato.
Yes.
Trustee Vito.
Yes.
Trustee Capatos.
Yes.
Good luck. Welcome to the village.
Thank you.
Item C.
Uh, request for Cook County Class 6B real estate tax assessment for today's Temptations Incorporated or an entity to be named at 171 Marquette Drive.
Marquardt.
Thank you. Drive.
Okay, again, this is a public hearing for the public to make comments regarding the request for a Class 7A real estate tax assessment for 171 Marquardt Drive. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Herald. Each member of the public shall have a five minutes to make their comments. During this time, staff and the board will not be answering questions. The comments should not be repetitive or argumentative. Are there any comments from the public? Once, twice, and that's that. There being no comments from the public, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion, trustee Raffato, second. Trustee Vogel. Clerk Brady, roll call, please.
Trustee Lang.
Yes.
Trustee Vogel.
Yes.
Trustee Kruger.
Yes.
Trustee Raffato.
Yes.
Trustee Vito.
Yes.
Trustee Capatos.
Yes.
Present and present.
Yes, Mr. Svan Dillis, we're filling another big building?
We are, thank you. Before you this evening is a 6B request for a building at 171 Marquardt Court, which is 41,050 square feet, uh, in available space. Today's Temptations Incorporated is under contract to purchase the entire property. They are a bakery food manufacturer of various breads and other baked goods for local grocery stores, and as part of its proposed relocation to Wheeling, the applicant is planning to open its first retail store at this property, which will then be open to the public. This retail space, it will be about 1,000 square feet in size. 50 employees will initially work out of the building, with 30 more employees to be added once full capacity is reached. Uh, the purchaser anticipates spending between $400 and $550,000 on improvements to the building, and, as I stated, staff does an analysis on the property tax impact, and under the scenario where improvements are made and the incentive is applied, the annual tax bill is $126,768. The scenario where the building remains vacant and unused, uh, the annual tax impact is Uh, again, the petitioner is here to answer any questions about the business. I'm happy to answer any questions about the 6B process.
Left and right, and shaking of heads. That means if there's no questions, we need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion, trustee Kruger, second.
Second.
Trustee Raffato. Clerk Brady, roll call, please.
Uh, trustee Lang.
Yes.
Trustee Vogel.
Yes.
Trustee Kruger.
Yes.
Trustee Raffato.
Yes.
Trustee Vito.
Yes.
Trustee Capatos.
Yes.
Present and present.
Yes, and just for clarification, I did say 7A. This is a 6B. My mistake. Congratulations. Welcome to the village. Clerk Brady.
Resolution awarding a Wheeling restaurant retail build-out assessment grant for Persomani Georgian Foods, LLC at 849 West Dundee Road.
Mr. Svan Dillis.
Uh, thank you. Before you this evening is a request that would make the third of these restaurant, uh, retail business grants of the year, uh, should you approve tonight's request. Uh, before you this evening is, uh, Persomani Georgian Food Art, who will be taking over a space formerly occupied by, uh, Dundee Dogs, uh, in the, um, uh, Dun...Dunhurst Plaza Shopping Center. Um, Dundee Dogs vacated the space, uh, more than a year ago, and the new tenant has signed a five-year lease. Um, the tenant anticipates, uh, or is requesting $29,143.94 to begin work on adding new flooring in the dining area, installing a new permanent walk-in cooler, installing a new hood ventilation system for the kitchen, upgrading several electrical components, installing brand-new cabinets, permanent shelving, and granite countertops, upgrading several plumbing components, and installing a new exterior wall sign. In total, the project value is estimated at $71,637. Uh, this program, um, allows for up to $50,000 in assistance for eligible expenses, or 50% of the materials, and 25% of eligible labor, whichever is less. Since the entire project is estimated at $71,637, the percentage formula yields a maximum eligible grant, which is requested this evening, of $29,143.94. I believe the petitioner is here this evening and can answer any, uh, additional questions about the business.
Trustee, please approach the, uh, podium, um, state your names. Uh, trustee Raffato has a question, and then trustee Capatos, you are?
Yeah, my name is David Namglauri, owner, company Persomani Georgian Food Art.
And you're?
Partner, Pizzina Brigata.
Who?
Pizzina Brigata.
Sorry, I...
We are friends, we are partners.
Excellent.
It will be our family business.
Excellent. I...I saw the pictures. I hope it looks like that. I remember when it was the place before it was. Uh, trustee Raffato, you had some questions, and then trustee Capatos?
I do, thank you. Actually, the first one is probably for, uh, staff. They're...where they're going, that shopping center is...it's just absolutely deplorable. They don't do anything there. They do their minimum, and, um, we're going to be...they're going to be investing a lot of money into this, and the owner is going to benefit from this, from all of the work that they're doing, our $30,000, their $100,000, some odd thousand dollars, whatever that is. Is...is there...and this is nothing against the petitioner, but is there anything that we can add on to the...the owner of that...of that shopping center? That...put a condition on that for this? I, you know, even improving their...their facial would be something. It's just absolutely terrible.
I'll defer to trustee Ferlo.
Sure.
Attorney Ferlo.
I have not been able to do that.
Good thing the microphones are on.
That status. Uh, trustee Raffato, in accordance with this program, there is not. There is not. And if there is something in terms of the failure of this owner to maintain his property and the condition is to be maintained under the village code, we should address it through code enforcement. But this program allows for, uh, this tenant to start to operate with the benefit of a grant to help with this build-out. As you know, uh, with a new tenant, based on the negotiation, sometimes the tenant pays for the build-out, sometimes the landlord pays for the build-out. Here, we've got a tenant that's paying for a build-out, right? And this grant is in place to assist this business, uh, with getting on its feet. Uh, this business in full operation will benefit the village in the form of sales tax. It'll certainly benefit, uh, these gentlemen in the form of continuing to operate, but to add a condition to this program, which has been laid out in the application, I think really at this point would not work. It wouldn't be appropriate now, but I do think if there are code enforcement issues, we should get out there and enforce, uh, through a different mechanism. But to add on to a program that's pretty comprehensive, I would advise against it.
Thank you, because I just...I knew from the get-go that he's not...I assume the owner of the shopping center is not contributing anything, correct?
Uh, as the requirement of grant is, the owner is contributing to this grant with the free month period, so he's granted us, uh, four months free lease time, so it's kind of contribution from his side.
Thank you. He said something for me. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, trustee Raffato. Trustee Capatos?
Thank you. First of all, welcome to Wheeling, and thank you for choosing us. What is Georgian food? Can you give me a clue as to what to respect?
Um, it's a ethical food. Georgian food is quite new in the United States, but it's, uh, becoming more and more popular. It's not very common in Illinois, in the Chicago area, but it's very common in New York. There are a lot of...I can tell that more than 10, uh, very, um, top-level restaurants in, uh, the, uh, in the Manhattan district, just opened recently. We have visited many of them. There are some Georgian food establishments in Illinois, but, uh, it's very new and unique. And, um, please, uh, believe that it's very tasty. It's a very, uh, healthy food. Uh, we're gonna make, uh, we're gonna prepare food on a daily basis. It will be fresh and, uh, healthy food, and we're gonna add also the bakery. It will be daily kitchen and bakery, and, uh, the meat products together with vegeta...vegetable meals, and I hope that our, um, daily kitchen will become one of the most popular, uh, restaurants for the Wheeling and for the neighborhood.
How many seats do you plan to have? So, how many tables or seats?
Uh, it's a very small area. Basically, that's...we choose this smaller. It's, uh, there will be six to eight dining seats, maximum 10, because it's more, uh, daily kitchen, but, um, our passion and our plan for the openment of our business is to, uh, rent the unit, which is, uh, available and free next to our unit. It's also, uh, free for more than a year, as far...as I know, so as long as we start our business and we will, uh, start our business, we're, uh, thinking, uh, adding this new unit and making, uh...
Big dining area.
The dining area, more dining space. So these are our plans.
So when you start, it's gonna be more carryout for...
At this stage, more and more carryout. At this stage, yeah, but our plan is to expand and add the next unit, which is available and free at this time on that plaza.
And approximately how long to get your, um, renovations done so that you can be able to open?
To do that, um, we have submitted, uh, the building permit application and business application, uh, to the Village of Wheeling, and as far as we will get all the permits and, uh, we're gonna start, I hope in two months, um, two months, or in the optimistic way, but, uh, I think, maximum three months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions?
No.
Motion, trustee Capatos, second.
Second.
Trustee Raffato. Trustee Raffato, I saw him wave. Uh, clerk Brady roll call, please.
Trustee Lang.
Yes.
Trustee Vogel.
Yes.
Trustee Kruger.
Yes.
Trustee Raffato.
Yes.
Trustee Vito.
Yes.
Trustee Papantos.
Yes.
President Horker.
Yes, welcome to the village, good luck.
Thank you so much, so much. Thank you.
Item F, clerk Brady.
Orders granted variation for Title 19, zoning to permit a six-foot-tall opaque fence within the front yard setback area at 555 Long Tree Drive, docket number 2021-21.
Are we recording?
Oh, that's my backup, just to make sure, yes.
The CYA backup.
Yeah, it's the CYA backup.
Uh, got a corner lot, Mr. Clicker, what do we got?
Uh, we have before you our standard corner lot question, where the side yard is actually considered a zoning code part of the front yard, uh, so therefore it needs to meet the front yard setbacks for fencing requirements. If it goes over towards the height, as you see on the screen, there's the photo of existing conditions, and you can actually see that the property immediately adjacent already has a six-foot fence up to property. This property owner would just like to mirror that and provide a better security system of safety net for his backyard and protection.
Trustee Raffato, you had a question?
Just for Ross. Ross, I, the last time there was somebody in front of us with this, you were looking at the code. Are we making advancements there?
Most certainly are. Uh, there's, uh, the village is undertaking a comprehensive, uh, code review, and this is, that's only on our list.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Raffato. Any other questions? If not, we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Give the motion to trustee Raffato with the second, to trustee Vogel.
Trustee Lang.
Yes.
Trustee Vogel.
Yes.
Trustee Kruger.
Yes.
Trustee Raffato.
Yes.
Trustee Vito.
Yes.
Trustee Papantos.
Yes.
President Horker.
Yes.
Uh, 13G.
That's it.
Thank you.
Uh, read G and H too, please.
Okay. Orders granted special use approval for preliminary planned unit development for 53-unit multifamily residential development, Union Apartments at 231 Wheeling Road, docket number 2021-15. Uh, H, resolution approving for preliminary plot of Union Apartment subdivision currently addressed 231 Wheeling Road, docket number 2021-23.
Mr. Clicker.
Yes, before you, it's a request for a PUD approval for Union Apartments, preliminary approval. Um, in this PUD process, it follows the R4 zoning, but it does allow the developer to ask for relief. Uh, in this case, yes, the developer is asking for four items of relief from the zoning code to allow this proposed development to go forward, and those are a reduction on the parking stall length to 18-foot versus the 18-foot, 18.5, 18.5 foot required. Uh, reduction in the drive aisle width to 24-foot versus the required 25.5 foot. Uh, an increased building height to 57 feet 6 inches and four stories, where the R4 zoning would be a maximum 35 to three stories. And to reduce the required number of parking spaces by two. Um, these are standard relief requests for development of this nature, and, uh, it was recommended for unanimous approval with six conditions. The first condition being that all residential access points should include a balcony, specifically the south door nearest the playground, which does not include such a balcony. Condition two, the same standing seam metal roof of the primary building shall be used for the cardboard roofs. Number three, the roof parapet shall screen all mechanical units on the roof. Number four, the details of the retaining wall and fence shall be provided during the final PUD review. Number five, the final details on the structural elements to be provided during the final PUD review. And number six, the landscape plan shall revise, so that a summary table matches the plant species shown on the plan. Uh, and again, as I mentioned, this was unanimous agreement.
Uh, I'm gonna go a little out of character. I have a couple of concerns on this. So we, we recently approved, uh, or there was recently another request to, to reduce the, the length of a, of a parking space. How, are, are we gonna start seeing these on a regular basis? Or, or is this something that we're gonna be considering? What is, I mean, what is really necessary for a parking space? And how is this different or the same from the last time?
This is different from the request that we recently had previously for the parking width, because in this case, the parking stall is going to have a curb gutter that allows the, the bumper to overhang in the landscape area. So the 18-foot five, 18-foot and a half foot long, long space is not as relevant, because a car can easily have two or three feet that have overhangs in the curb when it backs up to it. Um, the difference in the situation previously was that it was the 18-foot six went from the back of the curb line from a roadway to a driveway door, or to a garage door. So there was, there wasn't that ability to have a curb, to have a bumper overhang. Uh, so that's the, the difference, if you will, even though it's the same request, this is a-
Different physical barriers.
Correct.
So now this reduction of a drive aisle to 24 feet, how does the fire department feel about that? Cause I know there was discussion about this, or talk about this, but, but, um, but there was no little diagram with the fire truck going through it in here.
President Horker, we did a thorough review of the initial-
Chief McGee, could you go?
Yeah. It's the good old days.
That's right. We did a thorough review of the initial comments to be addressed, to our satisfaction. We have a turning radius and arc.
Okay. Uh, I apologize to the trustees for going out of character here. Uh, other questions and comments? Trustee Lang.
Thank you.
And then trustee Kruger.
Going back to that 18-foot, Mr. Clicker.
Yes.
Can we, so, so we're sort of, and maybe just the plan commission would need this in the future, but just so we're, we're educated about it, maybe if we knew what kind of cars fit and don't fit in those areas. I, I know when you talk about overhang, I have low cars and they wouldn't hit that overhang, you know, or I wouldn't want to, anyway. But if there's something that we, some kind of information on what cars actually fit in those spots, um, like I said in our last meeting, we went from 19, we had relief at 18.6, and now we're providing more relief again, and that, and that's okay. It may be justifiable, but if, if we knew what kind of cars we're up against here in, in this situation, it'd probably help.
And again, I, I, this is gonna be something we might be able to address in our municipal code updates, because again, my experience with other communities, an 18-foot parking stall is permitted, provided there is that ability to overhang. Um, so it's something we can look at to, to address.
Good, thank you. That's all I wanted to add. Okay.
Thank you, trustee Lang. Trustee Kruger, and then trustee Papantos.
Thank you, President. Um, Chief McGee, um, on the turning radius, you know, or the drive aisle being narrow, would, would our tower ladder truck ever need to go in there because it's a four-story building? And if so, the question is, don't those, uh, doesn't that rig have like these-
Outriggers.
Arms, like outriggers that, that, you know, I mean, are never, is the fire department okay with that?
Yeah, the partner would do, and we'll be able to backhand to whoever on the apartment lot, we actually would use the tower ladder because of the height of the building, but they sprinkle lots of them, so.
Ah, there you go.
We'll give them consideration, and that is part of the-
Uh, thank you. And my last question is for Ross, probably. Um, parapet wall is included in the 57 four?
Yes.
That's all I need. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kruger. Trustee Papantos.
Thank you. For the petitioners, I love the name and your logo. I watched the plan commission meeting, it's gorgeous. And thank you for presenting something to us that really does mimic what you presented in concept, and you didn't come up with something totally different. I think you're doing a great job. Um, I too had a little concern with the drive aisle and parking places, you seem to, I mean, you've done this before, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Okay, I, you have buildings in Milwaukee. Do you have problems with, um, vehicles parking and in an 18-foot spot? Or is it different there?
No, in, in Wisconsin, we have projects in Michigan that are the 18, 24, 18, and I believe, um, another project in Illinois, possibly, that has 18-foot, pardon myself. Yeah, and just my background in architecture, when I lay these things out, I always do 18, 24, 18. So when I saw the copy of all the different sizes, I was like, oh, that's different, but.
Okay, so this, this did through, okay. And you are, you decided to add some balconies?
Correct.
To, it's not all of the units.
Not all of it, but at the direction of the village, we did add balconies.
Right, and you will sprinkle those, or you know that balconies have to be sprinkled?
I think because they're bolt-on aluminum, I don't believe we have to try to sprinkle on, under it. We're working with a lot of requirements for that.
Okay.
Yeah. But I'm not a fire protection designer, so.
I don't want to get involved with all kinds of people. That's right, thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, looks like we're clear. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
13G.
Trustee, uh, yeah, sorry, we will approve one at a time. That's a motion for 13G, correct? Trustee Raffato, and that will be your second. Trustee Kruger?
Opposite.
Or vice versa. Motion trustee Kruger, second trustee Raffato.
Oh, that's-
My turn.
Okay.
Roll call.
Uh, trustee Lang.
Yes.
Trustee Vogel.
Yes.
Trustee Kruger.
Yes.
Trustee Raffato.
Yes.
Trustee Vito.
Yes.
Trustee Papantos.
Yes.
President Horker.
Yes, and then we need a motion to approve the resolution for the preliminary plat of the Union Apartment subdivision.
13H.
13H.
Strong.
Motion trustee Papantos, second.
Second.
Trustee Kruger, roll call, please.
Trustee Lang.
Yes.
Trustee Vogel.
Yes.
Trustee Kruger.
Yes.
Trustee Raffato.
Yes.
Trustee Vito.
Yes.
Trustee Papantos.
Yes.
President Horker.
Yes. So what are you waiting for? Shovels in the ground.
We got some liquor. Thank you very much.
Thank you for, thank you for coming to Wheeling. That's the best question ever. Ron, you've been approved. Uh, brings us to official communications. I have an official, I was given, uh, I was given an official communication by a very excited, uh, John Spandillis earlier. The, uh, the Original Rainbow Cone Truck is going to come to Wheeling and be serving, uh, ice cream. Uh, so back in 1929, they, you know what? John is very excited by this. And he's, he's like a hunting dog waiting to go. John, why don't you explain what this is and where they're coming to?
Rainbow Cone is a Chicago institution, uh, particularly on the South Side, uh, but they've been around, as President Horker said, since 1926. Uh, I only know from when my mom told me she went there as a kid, uh-
And Mr. Clicker was also very excited about this.
Well, not in, I only know from when she started going there as a kid. Hi, Mom.
You're dead.
I think I said it right. Anyway, uh, they are a, a Chicago institution, and to borrow a phrase from Mr. Clicker, uh, this is a marriage of North Side and South Side, in that Rainbow Cone will be bringing their mobile truck to Superdog, uh, from July 28th through August 1st. Uh, this is a, this is an announcement. Uh, Rainbow Cone has not yet made that announcement, so this is breaking news. Uh, Rainbow Cone does this, they travel throughout the suburbs, uh, bringing their truck to different, uh, locations. Uh, people line up. I have stood in that line for quite a long time.
Now, now you showed me a picture. Uh, how, how will they know it's the Rainbow Cone truck?
Uh, it, you, you will see it a mile away. It is very brightly colored.
What color?
Um, well, the truck is multicolored.
Oh.
Uh, ultimately, the goal here, and this is to put it out into the universe, is to, uh, encourage Rainbow Cone to build their third location on Restaurant Row.
Ah.
Uh, and that is a very lively building. Uh, it is a bright pink, but, um, it is an institution to Chicago. It is a destination, uh, business, and we are very happy to have them on the short, in the short term, and hopefully, uh, we can talk them into, uh, staying here and making Wheeling their third home.
Build a foundation around the truck and-
And they can't go anywhere? Yes.
And John, just so you know, my mother, when they opened the one in Lombard, my mom lives in Addison, she is nonstop talking about this thing, and it's unsettling how much she talks about this.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a big deal, so, um-
So they serve, so they serve it by the slice? They serve the ice cream by the slice?
They, they serve it by the slice. Uh, they only have two flavors, a Rainbow Cone and Cookies and Cream, and, uh, I'm not getting paid for this advertisement, I probably should.
But we will generate sales sales.
Yeah. Uh, uh, the, the Rainbow Cone is, uh, chocolate, strawberry, Palmer House, pistachio, and orange sherbet, all in one Rainbow Cone. Um, you can go to, uh, @TheOriginalRainbowCone for more information, uh, and again, we hope to-
Also a very, also a very colorful, uh-
Very colorful experience. Um, we will, we will be working with them to try and bring them to the village of Wheeling on a permanent basis.
But for now, they're gonna be at Superdog from, uh, 7:28 through 8:01, August through August 1st.
Correct.
Awesome. Are they gonna be at Run the Runway?
Uh, they are not.
Why?
Um, because we are, because we already have, uh, other ice cream options.
Okay.
Um, but our thanks to Superdog for, uh, agreeing to, uh, house them temporarily.
They would be great together, I guess. Um, any other, uh, official communications? Trustee Kruger.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna, DC Steph and I just wanna thank the police department for their stellar performance at the vaccination event, um, the 12th. Um, Director Bizar and I, hold your hand. Yeah. So, so much. I think I, I still have a cramp, but I believe we wrote, uh, somewhere close to 220 rabies vaccination certificates for, um, people, and I really hope we do it again. Uh, there was so much support from the Chicago Wolves and, uh, the, the, what was it? Body, something Body Experience or something, and, and then Heartland, our new, our new neighbors.
Total Body Experience.
Yeah, and, um, I mean, just, it was, I, I just know that people that were waiting for me and Sherry to write their, their rabies tags and give them their tags, were saying how absolutely organized it was. And then, cause they really enjoyed the drive-through experience and, and, um, met a lot of really cute dogs and, and, uh, I'm not a camp person, but there were some pretty interesting camps there. And, uh, how they covered them with towels so that they don't go all crazy while they're getting their, their, uh, their vaccination or their chip. But it was really a very successful event, and I hope we do it again.
We're looking forward to doing it again, and I want to thank you for all your assistance.
Uh, great having you there, and those interesting rabies vaccinations, that's also something I have other things as well that they ran with it.
So I think we had over, we closed to 300 on service.
Wow.
Yeah, it was-
Yeah, I wasn't counting them as they were going by. It was just, you have five animals here with you today! And then they had to write five certificates, but, uh, it was great. So I, I really do hope we do it again, and I don't, I don't know, I'm sure there's always room for improvement, but, um, it was pretty good the way it was, so. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kruger. Trustee Papantos, did you have something you-
Ron, just really quick, I want to remind anybody who's listening that we have National Night Out, The World Is Returning to Normal, that is August 3rd, Tuesday night, at, um, the Park District, once again, at the Aquatic Center, and certainly looking forward to going back to normal and seeing people again.
Thank you, trustee Papantos. Anyone else want to splice this last chance? If there are no other official communications, we do have, uh, one more piece of business to attend to. You have before you the bills from June 17th through July 14th. I need a motion for their approval.
So moved.
Motion trustee Papantos, second.
Second.
Trustee Lang, roll call, please.
Trustee Lang.
Yes.
Trustee Vogel.
Yes.
Trustee Kruger.
Yes.
Trustee Raffato.
Yes.
Trustee Vito.
Yes.
Trustee Papantos.
Yes.
President Horker.
Yes, um, we have no executive session tonight, so we need a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Motion trustee Kruger, second. Trustee Raffato, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.